My Burbank Talks presents another episode of Meet the Candidate. The show where we invite anyone appearing on the Burbank ballot in the 2024 election to join us here and give our listeners a chance to learn about their background and the issues important to them. Now, let's join our podcast.
Hello Burbank, Craig Stewart here with you once again in another of our series of Meet the Candidate. And today we have a County City Council on Chris Brizotti, who is very involved in the city in many ways professionally and volunteer wise. He's the chairman of our planning commission right now, but he's running for city council. And so we're here today to talk with him and see what's going on. So Chris, welcome to the show.
Hey, it's great to be here in downtown Burbank.
Actually, we are in the media district adjacent.
Right.
We're not actually in the media district. For some reason, they drew the line right around my little house area here.
Well, if we're not in it.
If you're a realtor, you're Tuluga Lake adjacent. Yes, that's true. It's time to sell your house for home value. Absolutely it is. Um, so yeah, and as we call all transparency, Chris and I have known each other for a long time. I got to first know Chris when he was a high school student. In fact, I was a coach at Burrows and he was the right fielder and had a pretty good little bat and had a pretty good arm.
Thank you.
And had a lot of fun back then.
Good old days.
What, when, uh, when did you graduate?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. Are we that old?
I think so.
Um, anyhow, let's talk about, about you. Have you lived in Burbank your entire life? You know, and, uh, you know, let's talk about your earlier, before high school.
Sure. So, um, I've lived in Burbank my entire life. My parents moved here in 1966. Uh, I grew up on Magnolia and Florence, went to Roosevelt Luther and John Burroughs High School. Um, I always say I started giving back at a very young age.
Alright.
Uh, I started giving back at a very young age. Um, at eight years old, I stood in front of Neiman Reed's Lumber City, if you remember where that is. Now it's the Do-It Center and I collected nearly a thousand dollars for the Jerry Lewis telethon.
I remember, yeah, the fact we're at Labor Day right now. So that would have been about this time back in the day, huh?
And the funny thing is.
Did you get on the air? Did you get on the air or anything?
So yeah, so, uh, you know, NBC was here in Burbank and my dad, after we collected the money, we, I could, I could collect it in a pickle jar and we drove over to the studios and we were going to dump it into the bin. And when someone said, no, 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 we want to, we want to put you on air. So my dad and I walked out there and we gave the, we gave the money to Jerry Lewis. So, and then, you know, like I said, since then I've served on over 30 boards, commissions and committees. So I think it started then at a young age.
I think a lot of the things that define us, if we do have a passion for them, they do start earlier in life. And we do them without knowing why we're doing it, but we just have a calling to do it.
I think it starts with your parents, you know, um, my dad would give anyone the shirt off his back. And that's just the way my father was and I witnessed it. I saw my dad. He didn't have a lot of money and he gave people money. Um, he gave people food. Um, and my mom. So I think, I think it's the way you're raised.
I think it's for that Burbank born and bred process. I mean, I think there's a lot of people that are, it's funny how many people are just lifelong Burbank residents and they all have that same set of values.
I agree.
So, okay, so well, we get you into high school and then so, you know, we, you and I lost contact a little after that because you move on and keep going and I'm still stuck at the high school level for what, 40 years?
Right.
Um, so our, our two left boroughs, what'd you do after that?
So I attended the University of Laverne. Uh, I was there three and a half years. I graduated early. And my first job I was.
What were your degree in?
I got a degree in business administration with a minor in marketing.
Okay.
Uh, at that time it was really tough to find a job. So believe it or not, I was working at a place called Photocam Fototronics.
Sure.
And then from there I worked for Compact Video and I made, for that time, I made a lot of money. Not in my profession, what I went to school for, but enough to raise, to pay off all my student loans within 15 months.
That's amazing.
It was amazing. I made a lot of money, but not in my profession. And then I wound up leaving. My dad almost killed me for a job making a quarter, a quarter of what I was making at Compact Video.
But were you happy?
I, I made the right decision. Yeah. I wanted, I wanted.
What job was that?
So I took a sales job for a company in, um, Santa Fe Springs and they sold, um, medical products. And I did that for about two years and then I moved into the insurance business. I was there about 15 years and then, uh, I was selling real, I had a real estate license and I was selling real estate on the side. And I was making more in my side money in real estate than I was in the insurance business. So I went into real estate, which I've been doing for 25 years.
Well, let's talk about real estate a little bit. You, um, the last few years, you've been my Burbank's best realtor. And that's.
Eight years.
Yeah. Well, we weren't doing it for my Burbank for the last three years, but I think.
Burbank leader was.
Right. But you win every year and, and, you know, we, we get thousands of votes from people, you know, and we don't put names on there in advance. We just say, who's your favorite realtor? And every year you win actually convincingly. So I mean, that, that must be a testament to not only the people you've, you know, worked with in the past, but you know, what you, what you're up to.
I'm grateful. All I can say is I'm grateful. I have a lot of great clients. Um, I can count on them for real estate or I can count on them for, um, a good talk and some coffee. Uh, if you need advice, I have some really wonderful clients. And I think in my business, uh, you don't just sell homes, you sell the community. I'm part of the community. And I'm there for them to take out the trash, walk their dog when they're on vacation. I'll do anything for my clients.
Well, let me ask you this. I, I, I don't know what kind of a conflict it was going to be. But if you, if you're on the city council and you have properties to sell that are in areas that are, you know, you know, an SB 35 project down the street, or we have a zoning or whatever it's going to be. I mean, right now you're probably also walking that type role, you know, with the planning commission. I mean, what, what can you tell people to make sure that the, that you're going to not say, oh, he's in developer's pocket on this project? How are you going to convey that to people?
Uh, that's a great question. So, uh, for the folks that don't know, um, I'm serving my third term on the planning board, 12 years. I missed one meeting in 12 years. Um, and believe it or not, I, I, I had never had a conflict in 12 years. Up, up until, up until, uh, two meetings ago, there was a cell phone tower going over on Main Street. And I had to recuse myself from that conversation. So needless to say, if it comes up, I will have to recuse myself.
Has the city attorney talked to you about that or anything?
Absolutely. Uh, I talked to, we have a direct, as a member of the planning board, and I'm sure city council, we have a direct communication with the city attorney. Anytime there's any gray area question, you ask the city, uh, the attorney for his advice.
Okay. Um, it's funny that, that whole thing. I, I understand why they're upset and all those things. But I'd asked the city and there's about 140 cell phone towers throughout the city. That's not the one and only. That's just one of 140 and, but the problem is they hide them so well. You don't realize they're all around town, but we had the same problem maybe 10 years ago.
Little White Chapel.
Little White Chapel.
That's right.
So.
You know, it's sensitive when you're around kids and all I can say is, uh, when the mama bears come out, be careful. They want, they're, they're, they're very, um, sensitive about their children.
Well, Burbank is a very tight community, as you know, and it's, it's, it's all NIMBYs. Every, every area of Burbank has its own little NIMBY section. And I think a lot of them don't realize that once, that our leaders have the best interest in mind for them. And in the long run, they will enjoy the fruits of the, of the situation. Very rarely does, you know, development go wrong, you know, but there are times it does, no doubt about that.
A hundred percent.
So.
A hundred percent.
Have you reviewed the media, media district specific plan yet? And you got any thoughts on that?
Uh, I have. Um, I'm not going to, I'm not going to comment on it because potentially I could be.
That makes me in front of the planning board?
Exactly. And I don't want, have to recuse myself from that meeting.
And that's not what this is all about. We're not here to.
Yeah.
Put you on the spot on things like that. Okay. So getting back out of, out of, uh, out of politics, well, back into politics, but let's get to the new politics. What got you interested in politics? Why, why is this something that, you know, you have a passion for? Yeah. You, you like to give and, and work in causes and all that and, and you've done well and you're a people person. But why politics? And why do you want to put yourself through what a, a council brass goes through in Burbank?
So you're not the first person that asked me about politics. And when I hear that, it's strange to me. Cause I don't look at it as politics. I look at it as serving. Um, I've been on the planning board for 12 years. I have a lot of knowledge. Living here in my entire life, I feel like I'm the bridge from the past to the future of what Burbank was and can be. Um, I think it would be a waste not to serve. Um, plus I, I enjoy this community. I enjoy, uh, bringing things forward that make sense to our residents. Um, I'm not afraid to be the, the only voice in the room to state something. Um, and, and I, I really feel like I can, I can make a positive impact.
Oh, I think you, you understand the flow of the community. Let's talk about some of our current issues.
Yeah.
Uh, let's, let's start off with housing.
Yeah.
And, uh, things such as the SB 35 and things like that, they're A being forced down our throats to a point.
Yeah, it is.
And also, um, um, but also the need we have to have, I think it's five or 6,000 more housing units built within three or four years, or we'll be in violation by the state. So how would you, how are we going to fix that problem?
Great. It's a great question. Um, I'm, I'm the perfect person for this, uh, role. If you'd say, um, housing, I'm a real estate agent. I know how to create housing. Um, we'll take a couple steps back. Uh, you guys have reported it. It's been online. I've been the no vote many times. And the no loan vote many times on SB 35, SB nine, AB 2011, um, and ADUs. Um, I was for, for the first rendition of the ADU. But when they tweaked the, the language, I recognized it as a, as a zone change in our residential community. And I, and I fought, I've been fighting against it ever since. Um, I figured out a better way.
Um, tell us.
Other, other communities like Huntington Beach and, and, uh, Bel Air have fought this at great taxpayer expense. Millions and millions of dollars. We need to work with our representatives, our local and our Sacramento representatives and changing how we go about putting these projects in our community. And what I want to do is incentivize development where we want it, not where they want it. Where, let's say for instance, the, um, the K, the old Kmart site.
Right.
That is a wonderful site for at least 300 units of brownstones, three story units with garages, 3,000 square feet, 2,800 square feet. And then you've got the old IKEA site. We need to be able to incentivize development where we want it to have the owner of the property release it and then have a developer build it. There's tons of those properties within our city that we can incentivize. So I think we just need to go back and rework this so that way we get, we get what we want without disrupting our residential neighborhoods.
I agree with going back and talking to your developers and the property owners. But, you know, the people who own the, uh, the IKEA property, they've gone through, um, new ownership and there was a tragedy in their, their structure and, but, you know, as we know, every, every day they sit in that land empty, that land goes up in value. So what's their motivation to actually do something and, and get something done there? Or, or sell the property or whatever it's going to take? What's their motivation? And how do we get them to, to actually, you'll get off the?
Money. Money is the motivation. So if you give them a tax incentive, tax break, capital gains tax break, some kind of incentive to release that property, that's their motivation.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then do you think we can find developers who want to come in and then develop that?
Absolutely. And you got to give the developer something to do, to, to incentivize the developer. Either that's density or maybe it's a tax break. I mean, you have to be able to incentivize both sides to make it happen. And I think that's the problem in California. We've, we've tried, like you said, force these projects on our communities. And everyone's fighting in an uproar and disrupting our community rather than incentivizing it properly.
I get it. I've said it before. I think, you know, we do need the housing, you know, and all that. And, but the, the problem I think we, Sacramento has is that there's a thousand cities in California. And they put out a blanket law for a thousand cities. Well, it's not one size fits all. Every city has its own unique characteristics. So what works in Eureka is not going to work in Burbank, you know, and, and.
I, I.
Everything else. So that's what the problem is, I think.
I've said this a million times in meetings. You can't paint every city with the same broad brush. Every, every city's different. We all value different things in our city and you just can't do that. And I think that's the problem.
I also think the problem was the fact the city was not SB 30, you know, we actually kind of broke the story about Pickwick. And it being SB 35 and we went to the city and they didn't know anything about it. And I think that's where the first ball got dropped was they were not, didn't know about SB 35 being passed and didn't start putting protections in advance. And then you said, you know, you, you vote no on these projects, but when they voted no on the Pickwick project, it cost the city about a half million dollars. Because the, yeah, they're trying to decide with the residents, but the, the law was different.
So I didn't vote on SB 35 only because I voted against SV, SB 35, the bill. But I didn't vote on any project for SB 35 only because that's only being looked at directly by our council. So I, I'm against all of these SB 35, AB 20, all these bills that impact a residential neighborhood. You're right. Um, that, that costs us, you say a half a million dollars? You're probably right. With staff time, attorney fees, that costs our taxpayers a lot of money.
Let, let's stay in the housing area. The big hot button issue right now, and it's the, we saw it in council before the election, rent control or possible rent control.
Yeah.
And as I said before, I see there's two very, there's no good guy, bad guy, unless sometimes look at the corporations. I think the corporations are not very touchy feely people, but your smaller landlords, we have to pay the new roof, the new air conditioning, all those things. And they need to get their, at least their money back, you know, break even compared to the, the renter who sees their rent going up anywhere from eight, nine percent a month, you know, year after year is untenable for some people. What, what's this? Give me the solution because I don't think there, and there is much of a solution, but what do you think?
So let me start by saying that as a real estate agent, this has been a very interesting copy to me. And I went back in my records 10 years and I represent tenants 60% of the time in contracts. Um, we do have statewide rent control in 1482. Uh, there are protections in there and our city council has increased those protections for the tenants. Uh, what you stated is exactly right. Um, I had, recently I had a heater go out in one of my client's units. Uh, the last time I did the exact same wall heater, it was $900. It was $4,200 two years later. To paint a one bedroom unit, it used to be about a thousand dollars. $2,600 to paint a one bedroom unit. Things are very expensive. And if you want our housing stock to wind up like some of these communities where they're rundown, dilapidated, um, that's what Burbank will turn into. Cause the owners will not be able to put the money into their units. They can't. It just, there's not, there's just not that kind of money available.
I'm scared about the, uh, the SB 35 project over, I was SB seven and son empire. That's, you know, seven stories, 150 units and seven parking places. And the developer just laughed at the city council basically and said, nothing to do about it. Uh, I guess we kind of like, uh, that's going to get run down within five years. Thank goodness either two projects didn't go through on Empire. They got it kind of pulled back now. But that, that's what I'm scared of happening also.
Yeah. I want to be respectful because I know a lot of people are looking for housing, but that's a horrible project. We could do better for our residents. We, we could do better for Burbank. I agree.
Yeah. I think that's a, I think the guy took advantage of a situation and, uh, so that's, I get, I get to say things you can't because I'm not running for the office and I, I always speak my mind. That's my, my, my thing.
I tend to speak my mind and I just want to say, we have to build 12,000 units in the next 10 years. So we got to figure out a way to do that. And so we can get our local control back. Cause that's what it's, this is about, getting our local control back.
I think it's pretty tough. I think, you know, developers look at areas like the, the, um, the ranch area and places like that. And it was, you know, oh, people would love to live here and let me figure out how to do something and all that. After a while you ruin the characteristics of the entire neighborhood.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, and we learned, we learned on the Mariposa project when I developed, the residents complained about the project going in that the developers just threw his hands and said, fine, I'm going to make an SB 35 project. And now you're, you're stuck with what goes in there. Well, that scares me too, you know?
I'll be honest with you. Any developer that does go SB 35 is, I immediately leaves me scratching my head. Cause that's the least line of resistance is SB 35.
Well, let's, uh, let's get on our, our bicycles and get out of, uh, out of that and get into transportation.
Okay.
So transportation is, uh, another hot topic going on right now. Um, but let's start off with the BRT. Okay. Um, feelings on that?
Well, uh, just looking logically, we've just said, right? We just said that we have to build 12,000 units in the next 10 years. Uh, let's say 12,000 units is about 25, 40,000 extra people in Burbank. Plus our traffic count goes up, people coming into Burbank every day, about a hundred thousand people. I can't see closing our arterial arteries like that. Our main thoroughfare on Olive, uh, to a dedicated bus lane where it's one, uh, going each way, one lane. I, it doesn't make much sense to me. Not to mention the businesses along that corridor will get destroyed. It seems like every time we start to make some progress coming out of COVID and whatnot. And then all of a sudden the economy and inflation, our small businesses keep getting hit over and over. And this will be one more thing that they get hit with. So again, I, I'm, I'm for transportation. I'm for the mixed flow. I'm definitely not for the dedicated bus lane.
Yeah. I think you have proof of concept first. You know, there's only a bus that's 80, 75 or 80% full going back and forth. And then I might understand their point, but right now they're talking about saving a minute and a half. Well, compared to the extra 10 minutes to probably take a driver to get through there out in a single lane.
You know, in my opinion, we already had the test. It was called raising cane. If you saw what that business did to the traffic in that area in that three or four month period, that's pretty much what it'll be with the dedicated lane.
Yeah, it was terrible.
Absolutely terrible.
Thank goodness they have a little bit more now and people aren't flocking to Burbank anymore. Um, I've been, I don't know if you saw our, our, asked the mayor, we just did on Burbank bus. But I've always been critical of the Burbank bus system. We had David Krisky on and I think he made some really good points. Um, and I think we need to, I, I'm not against the Burbank bus. I'm against how it's currently operating. And I don't think it, it serves the needs of Burbank in any way. Do you, what, what are your thoughts on, on this mass transportation in the city?
Again, um, very few people live a one dimensional life. So I'll just take me, for instance. I leave in the morning, you know, I drop my kid off at school and then I have to go to Costco and pick something up. And then I have to go to, uh, the Burbank Association of Realtors. Then I got to go to, I can't take public transportation. And I think most people, you got to go to the bank, get your haircut. Most people aren't doing that on a bike and they're not doing that on public transportation. I think we need to incentivize, if you want people to take public transportation, you have to incentivize that. And, and those, those can be people going to and from work.
I agree, but you know, right now you look at the Burbank bus, it costs a dollar and people still aren't using it at a dollar. So I'm not in, as if you made it free, I'm not sure people are going to take it because of its current routes. And, you know, it's, it's, it does not serve the Hill community in any way.
I, I, I agree with you and I, that's, I don't know if it was my generation or just after my generation. Remember the Got Wheels program?
Oh yeah. What we talked about, yeah.
That went away too.
Yeah, that, well, you know why? Because, um, kids don't vote.
Yeah. Well, there you go.
Um, so I think we need something like that. And I, you know, my, we need to get smaller buses, you know, and, and, and we have more routes and more frequency and more areas. Because I, you know, I, I just don't think that those big, huge lumbering buses, I call them Burbank limousines. Cause they have one person usually in them, uh, are serving the community the way they could, if they had a smaller fleet of, of small buses. And, and all around, you have going down Kenneth and Glen Oaks and, and all over the city.
You know, this could be just a generation gone by, buses, RTD. I remember as a kid, we used to take the bus down to Santa Monica. Look, the one, so my car was in the shop about three months ago. And I didn't rent a car, but I Ubered to all my appointments. I Ubered six times in one day. That's how people are traversing our city is through Uber. They may not own a car. They're just Ubering around. I don't think they're getting on public transportation. And I think at some point we're going to have to realize or give up on this notion that everyone's going to be on, on the bus. That, that, that's a time that I think has gone by.
Yeah. Because I think there's fiction, also the timing. If you want to go downtown and watch a movie and everything else, all of a sudden you get out at nine o'clock. Well, there's no bus to get you home. If, if you did take a bus up there, if you could take a bus up there, which is also an issue. I mean, you know, good cities that live at night, you know, even up till 10, 11 at night, still have a good transportation system for that time.
Yeah. And, and look, I, I've been, I've been meeting with residents for the last nine months preparing for, for this, uh, campaign. And people are concerned, public safety, public safety around public things like buses and, and library, all those things. That people are a little hesitant. They're, they're concerned about, uh, public safety.
Well, we're going to be in a, and like you said, we're going to maybe increase our population by 20 to 25,000 in the next 10 years. And we're already having trouble putting up, you know, getting enough recruits on the police department. How are we going to, you know, you're going to have to increase the budget, get more officers. And, you know, exponentially with all the, the growth, how, you know, what do you see in that, for that future also? And how do you feel about the police and how everything are going with it?
So just full disclosure, I'm the Burbank, uh, police officers, uh, I was, I was endorsed by the Burbank Police Officers Association. I'm on the Burbank Police Foundation. Um, but growing up in Burbank, you know, we had, you know, if you remember Craig Ratliff, he was an SRO officer at Luther Burbank Junior High School. So I've always been pro, um, police. Um, so we used to be budgeted for about 168 officers. Now we're down to 160. And I think we got 157 uniformed officers now. Um, same thing with our fire department. Uh, our fire department, we were down a rescue ambulance for almost 10 or, no, sorry, 15 or 20 years. We were using, uh, getting assistance from Glendale. And they just budgeted and put one in service. Uh, it makes zero sense. As our population grows, we're going to need more uniformed people and services, both fire and both police department.
I, and like you said, yeah, they have now RA 14, which runs Monday through Friday from, I think, seven to five in the daytime.
Yeah.
But when the city grows at 220, 250,000 a day.
Yeah.
And workers, everything else, that's four RAs, you know, for that 250,000 people.
Yeah.
So, but I think, uh, I think we've done a good job in, in raising the pay and making, you know, we're, we're losing a lot of people. And now that's not happening anymore because, and I think that's where you have to sometimes spend money and people don't like it. But that's where, you know, I mean, you know, crime is always the number one thing. That's, that's the number one, our website. Crime is always what brings more people to our website than anything else. So.
You know, as a small business owner, and I think running a city is no different. As a small business owner, if you want to attract and keep employees, you got to pay them. And you got to pay them a little bit better than the average, because if you don't, you're going to train them, spend all that money training them. And then they're going to go somewhere else for a few bucks more. So in my opinion, it's money well spent by paying people, you know, what they're worth or a little bit more than what they're worth, because you start factoring in the training and all the hours spent on that, you could lose a boatload of money.
I want to switch gears again, and we're going to actually going to go in reverse for a second and talk about, um, um, in business. And there's been a real problem in the last 10 years. I, I, five years, maybe 10 of people trying to get, you know, once they get their permit to get inspections, to get things built. Um, what, what can we do to, to speed that process up to get, you know, so people aren't waiting for, for weeks and weeks and weeks to have somebody look at something and check something off so they can continue their build?
So I'm not going to name specific businesses. But I can tell you right now, uh, there's a restaurant trying to open. But I can tell you right now, uh, there's a restaurant trying to open in this, close to this community that we're in right now. Um, two years, she'd been waiting in the permit process and trying to get her restaurant open. She's paying rent, paying taxes, and she, and she's not, she's not making a dime. We need a, a, a costier service, uh, I mean, a focused, focused service on getting these businesses opened. Um, a lot of people don't know, but if you close your business for, I think it's three months and someone buys that business, whether it's a restaurant, you have to bring that whole building up the code. The, the kitchen, every, it's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, plus the permit fees, plus the time involved. So I think there has to be a task force that will, will huddle around this issue and streamline the process to get these folks their business opened.
I agree, there's, there's, and, and same with the homeowners, who are just trying to do an addition or, or do something, even an ADU or things like that. It's taking them over a year to get anything.
So it was twenty-four months and uh, on the planning board, there was a member named uh, Mr. Attakani. And him and I were appalled by this twenty more, twenty-four month period, just to put simple addition on your house. Uh, we made a request to do a study and it took about two years to streamline the process. We went from twenty-four months, I think the last report, it was like we're down to eight or nine months in the process, which is still too long, which is still too long. But um, there's a lot of demand, we're farming things out to consultants. Uh, we may have to in- increase that staff, but um, it, it's, I hear, I hear it's a problem, and I hear Burbank.
Well, yeah, it might've increased, I see, and we're talking about, of course, more police probably, more, more staff in that area. You know, that all costs money, you know, and we, we pretty much have a balanced budget. You know, maybe a small surplus, but that's where I was worried about the pensions during the line. So how are we going to balance that without, you know, having to raise taxes substantially in the city?
Yeah, I mean, that's it, you, you, we have to balance it with creativity. We may have to move staff around uh, to focus more on one area than another. It just, it depends on, on the department heads and see how we can tackle this without costing our taxpayers a lot of money.
Yeah, well, we're pivoting again.
Great.
Let's talk about the homeless. They can, that's right now the buzzword in, in all of California, the governor, the governor's kinda made a decree saying, clean up your cities or lose your funding for things. Um, I think um, no, number one, we had that measure, uh, Measure H five, six, seven years ago.
Ten million bucks.
And yeah, we're putting in a lot of money, we're getting, we're getting back in five percent of, Burbank is getting about five percent of what Burbank puts into that budget with no recourse, no appeal, nothing. So now I hear that there's gonna be a new proposition A for homeless. I, I have not read it yet and I'm, I'm wondering, is that gonna be the same exact thing again? Cause I think Measure H is gonna sunset.
Yeah.
So I, I, what are, number one, what are your thoughts on, on our, our homeless situation? We have about a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty are declared homeless in Burbank. What can we do to help them? Are we doing enough? And what about, you know, what, what do you see to get this funded? So you know, Burbank residents aren't having to pay the bill when we're paying millions every year for the problem.
So let me start by saying, um, I participated in Family Promise before it went morphed into Holla. Um, and the way I participated in Family Promise was each of our local churches and synagogues would take in homeless families. And then um, I would serve as a chaperone and we would sleep amongst the homeless, make sure that they had what they needed over that weekend and that they were safe. Um, so I can tell you firsthand, I've met homeless people, I have slept among homeless people. I know their stories and I know their plight. Um, I think when it comes to Burbank versus other communities, we're doing pretty well with what we have with our Met team, our mental health uh, people and our Street Plus team. They're very conscientious and they're very diligent in their work. Um, if you read my website, is the, the, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're getting out of the Measure H money, ten million dollars is appalling to me. And I would strongly lean on our local officials, um, senators, congressmen, um, assembly saying that, that is not right. That is not equitable. And we need more of that piece of the pie so that we can, we can help the people that need help.
Um, what do we, what do we do to somebody who says, I wanna live in this tent here on the side of the freeway or wherever I'm gonna live, and I don't want your help and you can't make me do anything. How, how do you, how do you fix that problem? That to me, that's, I still, that's, that's a mental health problem because why would anybody choose to, to live outside with no, you know, restroom facilities and running water and all those things that we take for granted? So I mean, to me, that's, you know, I, I understand freedom, this is America and all that, but how do you deal with, with somebody says, I refuse your help?
Yeah, um, this is a tough one for me and I always get choked up. This is a very tough one, Craig. So my wife and I were pulling out of pavilions and um, there's a homeless guy standing there. And he had these really thick glasses on. And I only saw those glasses on one person in my life. As a kid that I went to Roosevelt with, junior high and high school with, and I won't give you his name on air. And I looked at this guy and I said, wow, is it him? I hadn't seen him in thirty years. And I asked my wife to roll down the window and she's like, what's the matter with you? I said, roll down the window. Goes down the window and I said, hey, can, can you come here for a second? And I, I called his name. And it was him. It was my friend. I got out of my car immediately, I gave him a hug, I gave him a hundred bucks. He was a vet. I made some calls around town, trying to get him some help, cause he was living in the planter bed in front of the pavilions. And I was told, Chris, we've taken him to the VA a dozen times and he will not stay there. He will not get the help that he needs. And he wound up dying of sepsis three months later. We have to figure out a way to get the people that mental health help. Whether that's partial institution, we, we have to come to grips with this. I understand we have civil rights and everyone has rights, but living intense on our streets, in our parks, at our libraries, that does not work. And I'll be the first one to say it, we need to get these people help professionally.
That's a absolutely amazing story and, and my heart goes out to you because I've also, you know, living in this city my entire life. I've seen people I've known and they're down in luck and you know, and as a, as a high school baseball coach and, you know, for forty years and all the kids I've coached and then once in a while, you know, I, I've had kids call me when they're twenties and say, you know, hey, I'm in a situation that, and I, I, I always give them something financially or whatever it is they need, I always try to help them because you know, you're, you're, you're family. You know, um, so it, it's a, yeah, I mean, but the problem is that there's no easy solution.
There's no easy solution, but I can tell you this, what we've been doing and the money we've thrown at it, we failed. So now it's time to do something different. You know, what, how many billions of dollars are we gonna blow on this issue and not rectify it?
I think that entire issue, and, and this is more of a statewide thing, is the fact that there are so many organizations taking that money and you wonder how much that money actually filters through to the people. And how much is, you know, for their fancy office and for their salaries and all those things. And, and you know, where, where is the money really going? And that's something that I think is always, you'll follow the money and, and watch the money. And yeah, you have nonprofits and a lot of great nonprofits, you know, I mean, no doubt that a lot of our nonprofits are working on minimal budgets. But I think other nonprofits make more money than they're actually putting out.
Well, that's, yeah, we've already witnessed, our, our state has told us that uh, billions of dollars of this money is unaccountable. So that's, to me, that's just terrible.
Well, that's a, uh, that's really heavy and that's something that, uh, you know, when you, when you really personalize it like that, I think it really, it is home for, for people, you know, and, and, you know, it's, it's easy just to pass that guy by the street or, or, you know, drug your head or whatever it is. And I, I was actually, I believe when I was actually McDonald's last night, waiting in line and a guy walked up to me and says, I had my wallet stolen, uh, I got rolled in the ditch and all, and everything else. I knew he was lying to me, he was just giving me the, the sobs door. I still gave him five bucks last night. I said, just do me a favor, you know, please buy some food, do not buy alcohol. I said, oh, I'm gonna, I said, no, no, I, I, I don't, don't convince me, just, that's all I'm asking. Let your conscience be your guide, who knows what he's gonna do with that five dollars. But you know, I, I said, and is five dollars gonna help a lot, but you know what? Maybe put some food in his belly, you know, and with, it, we need to do so much more. And, and we need to humanize it like you just did.
Yeah.
For people, I think if you humanize this problem, then people get a lot more concerned.
Yeah, look, I, I, I agree just what you just said. We have a lot of amazing nonprofits that do so much work in this community. I've served on many boards, many commissions that do amazing, amazing work.
Well, so which, which boards have you, which have you served on during the, in the last twenty years? What, what, what is somebody, you said you've been, it's been a lot, so what is?
Wow, so let's go.
Because I think that experience says a lot for you, that you've been in so many different areas in this city and know this is how your knowledge of the city has come about, besides just, you know, living here and being in real estate and all that. But, but you've been involved in the, the inner workings of the city also.
Yeah, so um, I've served on the Burbank Police Foundation, I've served uh, the Board of Directors on Providence St. Josephs. Uh, I've served at the YMCA. Uh, again, I've served with uh, the Family Promise. Um, I've served uh, you know, back in the day, Boy Scouts of America. Um, I, I've done a lot within the community. Um, and I continue, you know, uh, during COVID, um, during COVID, I had uh, interesting uh, COVID outreach uh, a couple of times. So um, my dad's, my dad's ninety-five years old. And uh, I, I, no matter what people think about getting vaccinated in our family, the most important thing was getting my father vaccinated because we hadn't seen him in so long. Uh, because he was sheltering in place and we didn't wanna get him sick. And so when the vaccine came out, I, I, I went to hell in high water, if I can say that, to get him the vaccine. And while we were there, um, an old timer was sitting in chairs at, at the drugstore and he said, how did you do that? How, how, how can I get it? And I, I looked at him, I said, well, just open your license and you do this, you do that and just get a confirmation. So walked out to the car, realizing what a complete jerk I was, realizing this guy doesn't have a, uh, an iPhone. He doesn't have a smartphone. So I went back in and gave him my card. And I said, hey, I said, if you need to help, call me. So sure enough, a couple of days later, he called me, went there, uploaded all the stuff, brought him over to uh, get vaccinated. And I was inspired, I was really inspired and I emailed all of our council members and I said, I got a plan. I got friends with laptops, let's, let's get the Burbank Bus, let's get the vaccination over at McAmbridge Park. And let's get our seniors vaccinated because they're left back because of the electronic age. And that's something on my website, I feel like they're left back because of electronic age. Well, make long story short, no one seemed to think that was a very good idea. So I took it upon myself and I got about twenty-five, thirty people vaccinated during that period of time.
And, and for all you know, you might have saved twenty-five or thirty lives. It's, I mean.
I'm not gonna take credit for that, all, all I'm gonna say is uh, I, I got some very concerned people that were shut in and uh, not able to, to uh, they, they weren't able to compete with the rest of us, let's put it that way.
I think people don't realize there's a lot of people who don't, not embrace technology, but don't understand technology, our older generation. I know my, my father never did, you know, he never knew anything, you know, about it, you know, I, I did anything for him, but, but there is that, you know, we, of course, with the Jocelyn Center and we have a lot of seniors there who, and they, they do try to work on programs to, to educate people, but you know, not all the seniors are involved in the Jocelyn Center and they're not, you know, and they're around town and, and, and they don't understand. So once again, there's another segment of our community, which are they forgotten or just, you know, not, you know, thought about?
I think they're forgotten. I think a little both, I, I honestly, um, my dad, look, God bless him. He's not going to the Jocelyn Center, he's just not that guy. I was at the Jocelyn Center about a month ago, looking at their programming and they do an amazing job. They do an amazing job, but there's a, like you said, there's a certain segment of the population that, that they're just not gonna go to the Jocelyn Center.
I'm uh, and once again, getting where I shouldn't go on this, but uh, I look at our, with immigration and they tell all the people and they're trying to get into the US, well, you have to go on your, your cell phone, download this app and, and get on to this resident, and so how do these people have cell phones? You know, how could they afford a cell phone bill every month? And, and they're, they're trying to get across, I mean, I saw, to me, it's crazy what we expect. You know, oh, we have an app for that. Yeah, but do they have a phone for?
Right.
You know?
Is it practical?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, you've come a long way in the, in the many years, it's just, it's been what, close to forty years now?
Then, oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, since we've uh, ran to each other.
Right.
And uh, um, wow, that's amazing, just to, you know, watch how far you've come is, is, you know, and, and I, I'm lucky as being a coach for that long, how many kids and their kids back then, they're forming their, their thoughts and their, you know, and to watch them become successful people and all the things they do in life, I'd say, wow, look, look at, so proud of these people, so proud of what they've become, you know, and, and it, it says a lot for, I think it says a lot for high school sports and what being part of a team is, the responsibility. Um, there's just so much that goes into that, that I think it, that we lose that sometimes. And you know, you know, one thing I'm fighting for right now is that there, there is no funding for the sport in any way to the schools.
Yeah.
I mean, nothing, so I'm scared we're gonna lose sports and active sports activities, but I know that's not a city council purview, but.
Yeah, and like I said, I've been out for the last nine months meeting with residents and schools are a big concern. It's, it's, it's a big question I get all the time, how are you gonna help our schools? Um, the only way I can help our schools, obviously, if funding for the SRO officers, if they want them, I'd be more than happy to discuss that and provide that, uh, if other council members are, are willing, um, joint use agreements. But um, I, I think we need bodies in our schools, we need to get the participation up and making how, making more housing and making it affordable to get more young families in Burbank. I think I, I think my plan, uh, I could play a good role in that with my plan. I, I, I think if we can just get inventory up to three or four hundred units, it would change the landscape. Right now, we only have about forty, fifty homes on the market. If you, if you increase the supply, the prices will come down. And I, I think my plan is viable, uh, and I think it, it could definitely help uh, the situation with our schools.
Well, I think it's important and it, um, I think that's a mess over there. And now we've gone to districts, and I think most people in Burbank realize they cannot vote for their school board member anymore. Chief Fizzi's city will not vote for a school board member in this election, which, you know, I don't understand. But that's their, the city council, you know, got rid of that, that proposal, but the school district embraced it.
Yeah, as you know, I was on the charter review committee for, it was, it was supposed to be a three month uh, tour duty and we, I think we lasted two years because of the topic of districts.
Right.
Totally against districts. I, I want, I want our council people to be accountable to everybody, not just a district. And the population size of Burbank, I, I don't think that's the right way of going. And you know, I, I don't know why the school board chose to go that direction, but I, I think you're right. I think that's a bad way.
Well, that, that not, not our problem right now, right now, our problem is, is running the city. Well, we're about the end of our show here and what I always do at the end is I give the candidate whatever time he wants. And you know where your camera is right here, so I'll let you, I'll let you look at the camera and tell people why they should vote for Chris Fazadi for city council and, and why, why their vote's important. And I'll let you talk to the voter right now, so as much time as you need, time is all yours.
I appreciate it. I appreciate the time. Uh. Again, my name's Chris Rosati. I'm running for Burbank City Council. Uh, I lived in Burbank my entire life. Burbank is a place for everyone. My parents moved here in 1966. Uh, I grew up in Magnolia Park. I went to all the local schools. At, at a young age, I started giving back and, and a later time in my life, uh, I've served on over 30 boards, commissions and committees. I'm a residential real estate broker. Uh, the great thing about my job is I get to hear all the reasons why. People want to live in Burbank and it's for all the same reasons why we live in Burbank. For the past nine months, I've been out meeting with residents, uh, talking to moms about school safety. And affordable daycare, talking to seniors about. Being lost in the, the electronic age. People want sustainability to help us and not cost us. And housing, we, as we discussed, housing. People are concerned about larger projects impacting their neighborhoods. Not having enough choices for houses for sale versus houses for rent. Tenants concerned about protections, landlords that are equally concerned about protections. I'm asking for your vote for council. I will focus on our community. I've lived here my entire life. I wanted to be a bridge from the past to the future. And make Burbank better. Thank you.
Wow.
Good.
Bad. No, not bad at all. Okay.
That was, that was a long, I don't know if you gave me all that time, but.
No, but that, that's what the, the whole point of this is, you know, of course, get your views out, but for people to get to know who you are. And I think that's what's important is they have that, this long form of, you know, you know, so people can actually, you know, watch this whenever they want to watch it.
Yeah.
And learn all about, you know, each candidate and, and what makes him, what makes him tick.
I, I've had four events in Burbank, one at the VFW, uh, at three at different restaurants. I'm trying to reach out to people to say, come on. Come meet me, ask me questions. I'll be perfectly candid with you. I'm going to hold some more events. I always tell people, if you want to, uh, get together, have a cup of coffee, or if you want to host a coffee and have people fire questions at me. I'm more than happy to come. I appreciate everyone's engagement. Um, it's, it's really refreshing because we all care. We all care so much.
Agreed. We all, we all do care.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for listening, everybody. We appreciate it. And I will remind all of our candidates. If you appear on the Burbank ballot, just send me an email at news@myburbank.com. And we will get you on a meet the candidate show. We will take all candidates on the ballot. So. Uh, please email me, let me know and we will take care of it. But for now, that's it. This is Craig Schur saying thank you very much for watching.